We've got the exciting opportunity here for the folks here as well as the folks watching from the comfort of their home, a board panelist discussion. And we've got some exciting board members that have been speakers previously for us. Dr. Hal Scherz, Dr. Chris Held, Dr. Rip Hollister, and Dr. Marcy Swelling. If you wouldn't mind taking a seat at the table. So doctors get a seat at the table. Look at that, and four of them to boot. Okay.
Do you have a question? If you want to jump in.
For reasons of my own, it's time for me to go home. We're driving back to San Antonio. But before I leave, I have a plaque for Michael. Let My Doctor Practice. To our chairman and our leader, for your vision, your courage, and your integrity. We all want to thank you for this very unique opportunity.
So kind, so kind. And Judy, before you leave, I want to say, this could not have happened without you and everyone. There were five of us to start with. Judy, Gina, Dan, myself, and Andrea joined us. And I told them at some point many months ago, this is like a Saturn V rocket on the way to the moon, where you've got five engines generating incredible power, and each at full thrust. And if even one of them would have stopped for a moment, we're not going to the moon. But they never did. Thank you.
I asked to be able to say this. I know, like many of you here, it costs a lot of money to come here. We had to pay for our transportation, for our lodging. It's also the time away from our practices, from our family, from everything else that we're doing. For the people that are out there in the Internet world, you're spending your very precious time here. But when Tom Garcia said that some people have actually put their life savings into this, he wasn't kidding. So we're here because of four very courageous people who've spent a lot of their time and effort. But two of them put a lot of their treasure into this as well. The cost of this conference is $400,000. What you have put into it at this point does not even match $100,000 of it. So unless we're willing to put our hands into our pockets, there's going to be a $300,000 debt with this. And do you think we're going to be, they're going to be able to put on another conference? Not for a long time. One of the things we need to do as doctors is not be afraid to say, pay for value. And I think that needs to start here. If you have gotten value from any of the speakers that have been here, whether it's Parth telling you about ICD-10, Dr. Krueger talking about the EMR, a fabulous talk we had about how to organize and how to have coalitions. The breadth of the knowledge that has been presented here has been tremendous. We need to listen to each other who don't have the same knowledge base. We've been able to hear from people who we don't always agree with. It's a beginning, but we really need to pay for value. So go back, think about how much value was created by this conference. And if you feel like it was something worthwhile, make sure that you put your money where your value is. And please contribute to help lower some of the costs of this. Thank you.
Do we have an address or contact information? Let's give them action steps.
The United Physicians Surgeons in America is at 501(c)(3). So not only will your dollars go to help pay for some of this a little bit more, it's also tax deductible as a donation. So give it, so send your checks there. I'm sure that, you know, it's all over the place with the website. If you go on to Let My Doctors Practice, some of it, the summit, United Physicians Surgeons of America, it'll all be able to channel back into that. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haines, for that important message. So we have an excellent panel here that is well accustomed to dealing with media, and me for that, for that matter. So if anyone has questions in here, by all means, come up. They could be questions on any of the topics we've discussed, possible problems, possible solutions, or whatever suits your fancy, or anyone at home as well. So in the meantime, maybe each of you could give one powerful point to get everyone thinking and talking. Dr. Scherz, do you want to start?
I'd love to. Thank you for having me here. I'm sorry that I've missed most of the conference. I'm glad that I was able to get here, at least for part of it. And I gave a talk yesterday that was pre-recorded, and hopefully that went over well. I think that the message that I would like to put out there is that we can't rely on Washington, or bureaucrats, or other people to solve our problems. We have to solve our own problems, and we have to come up with the solutions and make people who are in a position to allow them to thrive, to convince them that they're the right ideas. And everybody who's been in this room have heard what the right ideas are. We all know what they are. And the right ideas are what's right for our patients, and to allow us the opportunity to engage directly with our patients and do, and work for them instead of for somebody else. And we know how to do that. And if we keep that in mind at the forefront of anything that we do, any of our efforts, then everything that we do will eventually work out in the end for all of us, and we'll be able to be better doctors, be successful entrepreneurial doctors, and do what's right for our patients.
Great, thank you. Dr. Hollister, I saw you had your hand up respectfully.
Can I just, you know, I'm a family doctor from Colorado Springs here. Welcome to our beautiful, beautiful area. Can I have everyone just stand up for a minute? I'm going to do a family doctor thing. So I'm on the board of the Physicians Foundation, and if I was there, you would now understand we're going to do calisthetics, but I'm not going to make you do anything you're uncomfortable with. We're just going to do a little deep breathing. We got all the, all our lunch is kind of settling, our cortisol, and our blood sugars and resuscitation. Take a big, what I want you to do is take a little breath, and I want you to exhale with your stomach. Let it go in. Take a deep breath for five, let your tummy come out. One, two, three, four, five. Hold. Two, three, four, five. Exhale. Two, three, four. Your heart's coming down. One more. Deep breath. One, two, three, four, five. Hold. And exhale. Thank you. Let the record show, we all took a deep breath. All the impassioned, frustrated, dismayed, angry doctors took a second to think, what have we learned this week? We have learned so much, we're taking home so much with us, we've got a lot of energy, and we're going to go home and help our patients understand stuff, and join together and get some things done, so that we can accomplish this, which I've actually not heard that. I think this is such a rich message. Let My Doctor Practice. Isn't that great? I mean, it really capsulizes what we're, and nobody asked me to talk about this, by the way, but you guys came up with such a great term. We've got the doctor, we've got the practice, the physician, the patient, and there's this third person. And they're not letting us do what we want to do, and the practice is actually paying them, and they don't understand this. So there's this beautiful therapeutic relationship between physicians and patients that has to do with synergy, and energy, and caring, compassion, and it's along a line. And along that line, there's this, this thing that's very important. It's called money. It's what makes this work. And the practice is taking, by government mandate, that money and giving it to this third party that won't let us do what we need to do.
I think you make several excellent points. The one point that maybe you might wish to add was the "my" part, as in physicians, where the relationship belonging to the patient, that is to say, it's unique, it's individual, it's unlike any other. And I'm sure you can say about your patients, that each one, although there may be similarities, they're all like, unlike any other, and no one solution will fit any one of, a group of them as uniquely as they are. So I think "let my" belonging to the patient, doctor, practice. I think that really was a very, very important collection of words.
You thought about that, too. And the one thing I want to add is, who is saying this?
Our patients. Our patients, of course.
So we need to enunciate this, this has happened so well, and we need to also let our patients enunciate it. They're our partners in this. And so I thank you so much as a representative of the board from the Physicians Foundation. This is where our heart is, is empowering physicians to take care of their patients. So I thank you all, thank you all for coming. I agree, it's taken your time and your money, and it's, I hope that it is very well spent. And so thanks for just letting me kind of, just for a second, grab the stage, and with all my excellent panelists up here.
Dr. Strickland, did you want to make a comment before the next speaker?
Well, one other thing I did want to say. If you take this term, you know, you can say it in just however many ways you want. You can say, "Let My Doctor Practice." Or you can say, "Let My Doctor Practice." Or you can say, "Let My Doctor Practice." You can be happy, you can be joyful, you can be passionate, and we are all here, and I, that is one thing I wanted to say. You could get, if you listen to some of what happens here, somebody could come in and say, "That's a bunch of angry doctors." It's not a bunch of angry doctors. It is a bunch of passionate people. And I will, I will go away, I will come home, and there'll be people saying, "You know, Rip, you just went up there and you drank the Kool-Aid." And you're going to go home and you're going to say, "Y'all were in Colorado, weren't you?" I know what you've been doing. I know.
That's an interesting point.
But I want to tell you this, the Kool-Aid, the Kool-Aid we've been drinking to, we're addicted to. And we got addicted to this, and Parth is getting addicted to this. I got addicted to this at the University of Southern California School of Medicine, and it's called patient care. I'm addicted. And you try and take it away from me, and I am going to get passionate. And that's okay. So I did want to say that, too. And as you all go home from Colorado, be careful what's in your bag.
Dr. Strickland, did you want to add something now?
Yeah, thank you, Rip. And Rip had asked me yesterday, I think, where that came from, and I never answered, so I'm going to let you know. I was just thinking about Charlton Heston as Moses. "Let My People Go." I said, "Let My Doctor Practice." And I think Craig announced, but this is intended to be a town hall open mic session, so please, anybody that has anything they want to talk about, doesn't have to be what we're talking about, mic's yours.
And interestingly enough, too, Dr. Hollister, you mentioned all the different ways you could say, "Let My Doctor Practice," and there are different meanings with each one. But if you email it, text it, or EHR it, it's all in the mind of the beholder, and it doesn't get any message at all with regard to, are you angry? Are you passionate? Are you caring? Or are you just sighing because it's your last breath? It doesn't pass any of that on, and that's unfortunately one of the failings of EHR, that even the best technology people, I don't think will be able to work out at the moment. So if there's any questions, by all means, come up. Just announce yourself and ask your question.
My name is Brian Sanger. I'm a volunteer organizer, and this is more really for Dr. Strickland and the organizers of this event, realizing how much of their own personal money and reputation and time they've put into this. I'm not a physician, I'm a physician organizer. We all have different financial means or lack thereof. I'm personally going to give $1,000 to Dr. Strickland for this.
The bar has been set. Another question? Announce yourself and then your question, please.
I'm Ori Hampl. I'm a urologist from Houston. And when I showed up today, I missed most of the conference, unfortunately. But when I first saw this, I thought of Charlton Heston, but then I thought of the song my kids would come back from nursery school and elementary school around Passover time, because they would sing the song, you know? You know, "Let My People Go." And this is how kind I felt, you know? Let me practice. But then there's somebody saying, "No, no, no, I will not let you go."
Right.
And it's, I'm watching this insignia there, and I'm thinking, they won't let me practice.
In that story, though, it required a divine intervention. So perhaps we can be our own divine intervention on that one, and all take steps toward what we learned at this conference, and be the change that we wish to be.
Thank you for that. I've got to learn to sing, but it's a good message.
Another question? Just announce yourself and your question, please.
Dr. Wax, my name is Trang Nguyen. I'm a primary care doctor. I do internal medicine, family medicine, occupational medicine, my PhD, MD, you name it. So now I'm just plain tired of all this. But I think there's a very special question that needs to be addressed. These meetings are very expensive to put up. We certainly don't want it to end. I think there's one issue we need to address, and I think it's very important, not with just this organization, but medical organization in general, is how do we raise money for the future meetings to support our cause?
Certainly.
I mean, that's, that's a question, you know?
Right. Car washes and bake sales are somewhat limited, even if there's thousands of them, sure.
That would be a lot of cupcakes.
Absolutely, absolutely. But I think you raised a good question. Does anyone on the panel have any input to that?
Well, I think, I think that we can start some interesting ideas. We can have a foundation that patients can contribute to. You know, this is a combined effort, and indeed, you're right, we have to be able to raise money. We need to take the microphone back. We need to own this, and in owning it, it's going to cost us a little bit of money. I pledge $1,000 also, and I, can I have a hand for everybody who pledges $1,000? Absolutely. And we need to do this again, and again, and again. We've got to put money behind where our mouth is. That said, we can also engage other people, and other people in the community who want to have their lives, who want to own their life. That, I really think that we could be very engaged when we go back to our communities and solicit money. We're doing a good thing, a very good thing. I have nothing to be embarrassed about. I work for my patients, I ask them for money because I'm valuable. You're valuable, you're valuable, you're valuable. Let's, let's make our patients understand the value that we serve and that we have. And I think that we can, we can raise the money.
Well, this is an interesting thought. You know, if you read these laws, there's hundreds of millions of dollars in the laws allocated to educate patients and physicians about what's in the laws. And I think we've elucidated this week very clearly, many of the things are in the law. So I would suggest that the people that put on the meeting and organizers in the organization apply for a grant from HHS, because I think they certainly did educate, and I'd love to see the response. I would submit for the entire $400,000.
As someone who has organized physicians for the last seven years, I can tell you how incredibly difficult it is. The average trial attorney will give in the course of a year about $10,000 to organizations that support them. The average physician in this country gives about $110. Many physicians believe that membership in their state medical society or the specialty society is enough. They think that that is the organization that is representing their, their interests. And you've, you've heard in this meeting over the past week, that that couldn't be further from the truth. Now, having said that, I can tell you, having walked this road and having experienced this personal journey, I have honestly given up on trying to get the physician community to come together as a body of people to replace the AMA, let's say, because there's just not enough will anymore. We've been beaten down for so long. This is, this is the tip of the spear, but the rest of the, the community of physicians are apathetic. They don't want to take time out to even watch a webcast. And so our greatest strength is the passion that's in this room of these physician leaders, and bringing it to people who are interested in their health care. Our patients, businesses, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting business and tying insurance and business, but businesses, for the most part, want to, they want, they want to provide health care for their patients. And it makes their workforce healthier, it makes them more productive. So many businesses in this country want the opportunity to be able to provide health care for their patients. We've, we've seen that with, with the president of the organization that I represent, which is the Docs for Patient Care Foundation, with the NFIB, how they have stepped up to the plate, the National Federation of Independent Businesses, with the direct primary care model. They love that concept. They want, they're looking for solutions that we offer here. And, and so we need allies. We don't need to look for more leaders. We've got the leaders in this room. Now, what we need to do is we need to take this energy and take it out to the general public, and get them to contribute to support the things that we're talking about in this room, what we're doing, what we would like to do. Because if we can get the same muscle behind us as the muscle that is, is keeping us from allowing us to practice, then, then we will, we will be able to win that battle. And we've, we've spent the last year and a half putting together this foundation model, so that we can go to patients and go to other foundations and other philanthropic entities. And we've done this as a foundation, as a 501(c)(3), so that we can engage the, the whole universe of individuals who are concerned with their health care. And I think that's the direction that we need to head.
I agree, Hal, absolutely. And if you have the foundation, maybe we should just piggyback onto that. I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel, certainly. But why are we here? We are here to collaborate on a message. And then we have to take that message out to the public. I refuse to say that an insurance company keeps me from doing anything, because nobody keeps me from doing anything. Nobody keeps you from doing anything. Take back the microphone, own it. We need to own it. We need to establish that message with our patients. They need to have that faith in us again. They will come forward, they will donate money, businesses will donate money. It's time we own this, guys. Let's own it. Let's collaborate on a legitimate message that we, as a group, want to take back with us, and let's do it over, and over, and over, and over. I've got lots of opportunities to put that into video, which we need to do, because that's the best way, I agree. My AMR doesn't do my work for me. I call out my doctors, I told you that yesterday. We need to use our voice, our voice. And then we need to stand behind that voice and work for our patients. That's what matters. We make them healthy, productive people. Businesses come on, everybody comes on, because this is the right thing. We never go to bed doing the wrong thing. We go to bed always doing the right thing. Let's do the right thing for the right reason. Own it. And we'll all come back in spades. Trust, trust me on that one. Trust me.
Thank you, Dr. Swelling. We have two questions from the panel.
I'm just going to take one quick hit off of that, the family doctor thing. We're always looking to the next conference. We're always looking for funding that. But, but just understand, if we're looking for payment for the next conference, we're sort of like waiting.
Let's do it now.
We, it is time to stop waiting.
We were here, we're here. Don't wait until you've contributed your thoughts. Come, tell me, write them up. Let's take those thoughts, your thoughts. Let's collaborate that message. Let's put out a message all over the world. We're back, and we're not giving up the microphone again, ever.
We need to approach this from many different levels, as, as you've pointed out, not just from the lobbying congressional and big thing region. We have to take it house to house. We have to take it person to person, and that's how the country was built and then seceded from England to begin with. So there's a merit to all of those approaches. A question from the floor, if you could announce yourself and your specialty and your station?
Vani Julipali, I'm a gastroenterologist. I just had a simple potential funding solution. Crowdfund. Just craft a message, a message that resonates. Crowdfund it, go out to the people. That's where we get our power from, from. We just crowdfund it.
It's so smart, yeah. Our patients are clamoring for us to do something. When I talk to my patients about what I'm doing, and I put literature in my, in my waiting room a lot, I initially got it Docs for Patient Care. I mean, I've met these, so many people in this room. You know, we're meeting in Denver, because we're from California, and New Jersey, and Florida, and Texas, and we're here coming together. We met, and we're using each other's positive energy. I was telling them, it's like Physicians Anonymous, to free us from this, you know, abuse and addiction that we get of the system we're trapped in. And it's wonderful, and my patients are like, "Thank you." I think if we did put out just a message, the patients would just join us and say, "Thank you." So I thank you guys, and I think no matter what specialty you're in, family practice to a specialty, it's different for everyone, but it's the same thing. Patients first. If our, we have to ask ourselves, do our patients come first? Does this put them first? And is this the best use of our resources? And anything that we do for our patients, not just to implement and comply what, you know, central planners tell us, that's, that's the way to, to put our energy.
Thank you. Another question? Just announce yourself, your specialty, and the question.
This is Akash Khan, internal medicine hospitalist. Actually, it's not a question, it's basically a statement, and I, to Dr. Wen's question, like, how can we really keep on spreading the message? Because we really just cannot afford to invest so much money on holding events like that. So the answer is simple, social media. It's going to take very minimal investment to reach out audience at a very huge scale. And I can just tell you from my own experience, that I just made a couple of videos, actually, I've just launched a couple of them, there's some more coming. They are much more economical than this conference, and they have reached out to more than 20,000 people within a matter of two weeks only. So in this way, I think we can reach out to people more and more. And then one, another very important thing we need to provide the audience and the patients is a little bit of entertainment and humor. Because they sometimes perceive us as very boring people. So for that reason, we need to show our hu, like, the comical or the humor part of our personality, and show that we can also reach out to them in a very entertaining way while providing them a very serious service. And I think in this way, we can really engage more and more people to listen to us and join our cause.
Thank you. Another question?
I love all the new idea generation. I also had proposed that we do this at the tables today, now. So we have pads of paper that are in the center of the table, and I would invite, I know you've been sitting in these chairs all day, you look very tired. I'd invite you to just do it now. Take a pad of paper and write down one, two, or three things that you are taking away as the simple message that you're going to take home with you, or some actions that you're going to do. And there's nothing, you know, I've been to a lot of these conferences where you walk out really fired up, and then you go back to your daily routine, and you kind of go back to the old way, because that's what's most familiar. So if we can get a way to seal this experience in and have a, your own personal experience of what you agree with yourself to take home, that would be awesome from my perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Chu.
Can I, can I give people two things to do? Number one, tell at least one colleague about this meeting and about what you spent the week or the weekend doing. And, and commit yourself to making sure that somebody who may not necessarily agree with you, or know what's going on, be, be familiar with some of the issues that everybody in this room is familiar with, that, that you educate one person. The second thing is, take the time, as, as Dr. Held said, put information in your waiting rooms about some of the health care topics. And, and then find out from your patients if they're interested or not. And I guarantee you that 95% of the people will thank you. people will thank you. Some people will be offended. You have to be prepared for that, but most people will thank you. So if you
Well, that's why it's important to ask patients before you start talking about an ideology or a message. It's important to ask them. It's just like with quitting smoking. You know, if I stomp my little foot and I say, you gotta quit smoking, you gotta quit smoking now. It's gonna kill you. It's awful. It killed my mother's terrible stuff. And they're not ready for that message. They're not hearing it at all. If you say, you know what, this is dreadful stuff. Are you ready to take a step forward? Because we've got positive plans. And they have to commit to it. And I think that's important, to get their support and to get them on the page.
But first, they have to know what the problems are. They have to know that there's, there are things going wrong. They know, people intuitively know things aren't going well, but they don't know what the problems are.
Well, they know that their copays are going up. They know that their deductibles are going up. They know that their, the part, their premiums are jumping through the roof. They know that all the rules are changing. Maybe they didn't need referrals before. Now they need them, and they're at the specialist's office, and they, they're stuck, and the specialists won't see them without that. And, you know, I would tell specialists the same thing I would tell the pharmacies. I would never, ever not give a patient a service or anything, just because their insurance has either said no or hasn't said yes yet. Give them every opportunity to say yes. Offer them a reasonable cash price, you know, whether it's a pharmacy for a medication. You know, your insurance company is turning this down. I can contact your doctor, and we can work through this. If you want the prescription, here's what it's going to be. So that way, you're not denying care. Because I've seen specialists in the Northeast turn people away because the insurance hasn't said yes yet, which is a passive no, in my mind. And the patient says, well, then I can't. No, you can. It's just, you have to have the discussion. You have to be an individual. You have to be an adult, and you have to be responsible. And people are learning that. They have no experience with that.
Well, you know, I'd like to make a comment on that.
Please.
At some point, we, as physicians, that's unacceptable. What if in that delay time, the patient dies? And at some point in time, we have to quit sitting back and saying, okay, we'll wait for the insurance, and we'll wait for that. These are our patients. We have to do what is in their best interest at that moment. How, the insurance is secondary. And we need to quit acquiescing to that. And that's when I came to let my doctor practice. You know, there's a red line, or what do we call it? The tipping point, or the line in the sand, that we have to each decide, where is that? And when we reach that, we need to find a way to sustain the patient-physician relationship. Give them the care, regardless what third party says. Now, they're trying to make it so we can't do that.
Right. They're trying to make it with Medicare, that if you don't have a number...
Well, or your licensure, or your MOC, or your NPI.
Absolutely. Even beyond that.
And that's where the rubber meets the road. And so we, as physicians, need to not just let my doctor practice, but I'm going to practice, keep me out of jail. Or, you know, we're at that point. Everyone here in this room is here because they believe that. And so, I mean, I'd go on GoFundMe and say, we're people that want to take care of our patients. You want to contribute? Because all the other money is going to the other side that says, we're for ACOs, and we're for this, and we're for that. And I wonder, who's deciding what we're for? Show us these numbers. Show us the numbers that show that American physicians are for that. Where do those numbers come from?
Yeah. There's really no data. It comes down from the top, unfortunately. And from my view, the, it's like the ACGME merger with the osteopathic GME. Basically, there were two streams. Government had to fund in on each of them. And I think they said, guys, we're not funding two of yous get together or forget it. And two that never saw eye to eye ever, all of a sudden are being crushed together, trying to treat it as professionally as possible, rather than trying to find alternate funding streams and say, you know what? We're unique. We're individual. We even compete with each other when necessary for patient benefit, and we offer unique solutions. There should be as many possible options. And sometimes, I definitely agree with you, Dr. Held. Thank you.
And I think we need to empower our patients. So my suggestion would be, go home and ask your patient how they think we can do our job better. Right?
Dr. Pam Weibel were here. That's what she was saying. I know.
That's what we need to do. That's what I do. With my code physical every year, as I said yesterday, it's not a physical. I know my patients like the back of my hand. I ask them, how can we do our job better? What's frustrating you? This is a collaborative effort. So let my doctor practice as my patient. Let me do my job as our side of it. So there are two sides there. We want to do our job. They want us to be able to do our job. But we need to empower them as well. So let's empower the patients, and they will be, they will engage.
They will. But we won't know them like the back of our hand, when every year, they're going to a new doctor because their insurance changes. I call it the insurance shuffle. I have a new patient every day, then there's someone else's new patient the next day, and it doesn't matter. Nobody knows anybody.
You're right. But that's why...
You're enabling that.
Well, don't enable it. Stop. Insurance companies, no. Don't enable it.
Dr. Swelling? I think this goes to your point. When a patient calls, staff usually says, what's your name? What's your insurance? And then the minute they say it's something, I'm sorry, we don't take that, as if you don't take the patient. And I think one of the take-home points you can all put on your pads is, talk to your office staff and get them to say, hi, this is Dr. So-and-so's office. How can I help you? And then everything else can be a matter of course. Never turn away a patient because you don't accept their insurance. It'll be less complicated. You'll enjoy the relationship more. And the patients will be invested. They'll want to hear what you have to say. And they may actually come together on a synergistic plan with you and work toward their own health.
They do. They know what they want. So I'll tell you about two calls that I've gotten this weekend. The first call came from one of my patients. "Dr. Swelling, I need your help." Well, it's not really me. It's my next door neighbor, who has cancer and can't get help. Can you help them? I said, send me her name and her phone number. I land tomorrow at 5:00. I will call her as soon as I get home. I will see her Sunday night or Monday morning. That's the answer. Then I got a call from the mayor. The mayor said to me, you know, we've got a problem. We need some compassionate care. My friend, and I know his friend, his wife has leukemia, and we can't get her the medicine she needs. We know you'll get it. Now, how about that? How about working on those kinds of things? Without, and I didn't ask for a dime. Nobody talked about money at all. None. It'll take me 10 minutes to make those phone calls to my people to get that patient the compassionate care they need. 10 minutes.
And that's a huge relationship builder, and it's monstrous PR. And I think everybody agrees, the best PR is is word of mouth. Oh, my gosh. I see Dr. Scherz, and he's just the most wonderful urologist with the smallest hands. He's just the greatest. Sorry.
Marcy, I want to know why the mayor can make a phone call like that and hope that you can get things done, rather than using his platform to help effect change?
Because the mayor doesn't have any way to expect change in health care. He knows that the doctors do. He gets it. Because I've told him that the power lies here to make the changes. So he's called me to make those changes. I accept it. I want you guys to accept it also. I know you do. I know everybody here does. And I want to take that power and make things better.
See, I would prefer to see the mayor use a platform, a public forum, to help push and drive this change, rather than have to rely on a personal phone call to you to do things under the table.
But I'm the advocate. Isn't that, isn't that wonderful? Aren't you proud to be the advocate?
Yes.
Congratulations, doctors. You're both right.
Yes.
We do have a question from the gallery, if you don't mind. Announce yourself and your question, please.
Hey, I'm Prastasam. I'm a medical student. It's not so much of a question as an observation. I keep seeing that everyone in this room, everyone on the stage, and pretty much everybody has the same idea of what we need to accomplish. We need to get the third parties, the government out of medicine. And that, I think if we extrapolate and say, okay, let's ask every doctor in this country, do they want that same thing? I think we're going to get the same answer from the majority. But what I am seeing is that there's divisions, that especially today we're noticing. How do we get this done? Everyone's saying, we have to join together. We have to team up. Everyone has to decide, we're on the same team. We get a, we either make a lobby or form some group that's going to do this, or we join the existing ones. But the problem is, even in this room, you could see, half the people are saying, I'm never going to join that group, because, and of course, I'm speaking of the AMA, because I think that there are conflicts of interest. I think they've done some things I don't like, whatever. But either way, if there's half the people that are never going to join this lobby, then we're never going to really unite. And as long as we're divided, we're going to fall. And until we all join forces in one thing for one common goal, and obviously we all have the same common goal, we can't really get it done there.
We took an oath. We did sign on. We took an oath. Let's stand by that oath. It's just that easy. And of course, you're absolutely right. What we need to do moving forward here is we need to articulate the strategy that we want to use to get that done. How do we do this? We all know where we want to go. We've got a vision. Now, how do we get there? And then allow ourselves to be accountable. Again, own it, and let's get there. When we, when Chris was with me in Washington, when we decided that the ICD-10 delay was number one on our list, right? We voted. And the first year, we got it. So own it. Now, it's not all perfect, but we were able to accomplish something, because we voted on it together. Decide what you want to do, and then let's do it.
But when it comes down to it, we are never going to have as much money as the hospital lobby, as special interests.
Insurance.
As insurance. We will never have hundreds of billions of doctors, because there's only 800,000 practicing physicians in the United States, only 594,000 that take Medicare. We will never be able to match the money. So as long as the people making the bad layers of laws upon laws are going to respond to the money, we will never have a voice if we try to go through, top-down, central planning, Washington DC. Period. I don't care if we are all in the AMA. We will not get it. Period. I've seen it. Don't trust them. It's true. Go up there and see.
Simple plan, though. How, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I completely agree with you. We'll never have the money. But what doctors have that no other organization have is the respect of the people in this country. And if we have one unified voice, and I think the way that it needs to happen is a group that, okay, the doctor doesn't have to pay X amount of money per year to join. The doctor just signs up saying that we want this. And if every doctor did that, then people are going to listen, because people respect doctors. And then the money doesn't matter as much as everyone joining together.
I love young idealism. And I'm not trying to tell you that you're wrong. But people will change their doctor for a $7 copay. So as much respect as we have, Chris is absolutely right. She's 100% right. We need somebody who's got a bigger ax to swing than the special interests that are driving decisions that are being made. And I think that those, that bigger body is going to be the business community, it's going to be the general public. And we need to strategize and figure out the best way to garner that support. Because once we have that support behind us, then the physicians who are sitting on the sidelines will flock to what we're doing.
I do agree with you, though. I'm sorry. If we had a physician group, make it zero, you don't have to pay $400 to be in it. And I've said that. I've asked everybody in every group I've ever been in, can we not just let everybody join the first year for free dues? And then we'd say, wow, we have, you know, 50,000 members. We have more members than the AMA. That's newsworthy. That makes us the voice. We're the voice of physicians. So I want a group to have zero.
We have a group. The National Health Policy Coalition is never asking for a dime. Will you join for free? And your voice is heard. So, and I will challenge how, and how I know that in large part, you're right. However, if somebody will leave your practice for a $7 copay, whose fault is that?
Well, the other thing, too, is if a patient is not invested in the relationship at all, that patient's never going to be successful with your care anyway.
Precisely. So you have to engage them in that relationship. Which is worth billions and billions. It's the priceless part of the MasterCard thing. This relationship is absolutely, it's worth life and death, guys. You know that.
Well, it's education, too. Our patients think they have to leave, because they've been misled to think that health care costs hundreds of millions of dollars if you get cancer or heart attack. They've been told, and the false billing, the charge master billing from the hospitals, and the gamesmanship and all that we know about, they get horrific bills. And they don't show on how much is paid. And even our colleagues don't understand what's going on. So yes, on the Part A side, they may need to change for $7. We need to decouple physician component from hospital. There's a lot of things that we could do that coming together. And then they won't leave us for $7.
Well, it comes down to some of the things that were discussed here, which is direct primary care. It's HSAs. It's catastrophic health care plans, not the Cadillac plans that the Obamacare mandates are creating that cover every conceivable health care event. And so if we can have those three components, then health care becomes affordable. We take it away from the most expensive place where care is delivered, which is the hospital, which is where it's being driven to. And we put it back where it belongs, which is in the primary care doctors' offices.
In the primary care and in specialist care. You have a relationship to...
No question about it. But first of all, you need to have the doctor, the primary care doctor, be the one who is the captain of the ship, and have that relationship with their patients. And the relationships that the primary care doctors have with the specialists will drive the direction of patient movement.
It's one of trust and cooperation.
Exactly.
I mean, if you do the kinds of things my patients needs and that I need, why wouldn't I use it?
Absolutely.
There's no question. We have another question from Dr. Arvind Kavali.
Two-part observational suggestion. As any entrepreneur knows, when you invest in a new venture, you can either invest money or sweat. So for those people who can't invest $1,000, I suggest you become the road warriors, pick up the message from this meeting, and convey your message to as many people as possible, and don't stop until people listen to you. So as an example, I'll be talking to a group of docs in Delaware in November, and we will use some of the topics from here. I'm talking to another executive of a private ambulatory surgical center that's going to open up in our area next week. And we're going to talk about how we can connect direct primary care with a private for-profit ambulatory surgical center. So that's one aspect. The second aspect is philosophically, we've gotten here, all of us, whether it's physicians or doctors, because we've made decisions based on fear and ignorance. Okay? So the exact opposite of fear and ignorance is confidence and knowledge. I think we've gained a lot of confidence and knowledge coming to this place. Hal knows me. I've been doing this for a long time. And we don't want to hurt cats. But what we want to do is, we want to be confident and we want to be knowledgeable about what we know is our facts and what we know is right. And what Marcy's saying is right, and what Chris is saying are facts. So we have to, we have the brain on our side, but we don't have the heart to say it in a passionate way. So I think if we can use this message and talk to our colleagues, and more importantly, our patients, to say, look, we are compassionate people. We want to provide quality care at a reasonable cost. We are here 24 hours a day, 365, and we never ask for how much money it's going to cost you to come and see me, or take care of somebody else. I think it's very easy to pass this message on. What I'd like to do, ask for the organizers, is to provide all of us, as much as possible, a set of tools, online perhaps, that we can use as demonstration methods. And I suggested that we make pictures of all the portraits that, or cartoons that were put on the walls, as PDFs or PowerPoints. And we can use them as quick illustrations in our talks or other places at medical centers. So that's my suggestion.
And we need all your name and contact information. Is everybody giving that to us? So everybody needs to put their name and all their contact information on a piece of paper, and make sure that we can get in touch with you, or you can get in touch with someone else that you've met here. Okay? So don't leave until you've given that to us today.
Great. Thank you. We have Dr. Beth Haynes from the Benjamin Rush Institute.
So I don't know that we're ever going to have one organization that will speak, in fact, I know we will never have one organization that will speak for all of us. And I don't see that as a negative. I see it as a positive. This is a country of individuals who come together when they have an issue that they feel united about. And I think we can do that with the many organizations that already exist. A perfect example of this is the Benjamin Rush Institute working with AMSA, the American Medical Student Association. So AMSA left AMA because they felt that they weren't liberal and progressive enough. And there's many organizations that have left the AMA because they think they're too progressive. We don't have to all have one mindset. And some, one of the issues that we're partnering with AMSA on is the idea of the direct primary care. Just one example. It excites medical students about being in primary care. It excites medical students about being in primary care. It's an issue we can come together and educate on. And I think we need to look for those issues, whether it's MOC, whether it's meaningful use. And we can pool our resources around certain issues that we do have in common. And trying to create a whole bunch of people under one umbrella and say we all speak with one voice is not going to happen for more than just issue by issue. And again, that's our strength because we can bring the expertise from all these various areas, and different people will have issues that speak to them, and they'll feel more passionate, and they get involved with those issues in an in-depth way. But we're not going to do this if we alienate each other. We're not going to do -- I mean, when you think about what's happened in our country with Democrats and Republicans, we have to get away from that and quit making enemies of people. Let's look for where we can actually come together in positive solution and moving things forward. And you can't do that if you're calling them the enemy, if you're only pointing out the places where they're doing things wrong, instead of really looking for places where people are doing things that you agree with, and then collaborating in a strength way to really move things forward. So that would be my comment.
Beth, you're so right. And Beth has done such an incredible job with the Benjamin Rush Foundation, truly.
And after the conference --
I have an idea. Can I just throw out an idea? So Beth, you know everything about educating. You're into the education mode, and we're in there, and the medical students and in the colleges, and you have these great forums and these wonderful debates. Why don't we take that idea, and Mr. Norbeck, if the Physicians' Foundations will help us, why don't we set up some community forums where we can educate patients and educate doctors? So we could take this back and actually have a useful function. And of course, each person can do it their own way, but at least we'll start the conversation going, and we'll get people involved in our communities. And I'd like to engage you on that opportunity. Think about it. I think it's a good way to take this message out to the community, educate people, use our voice, and create a little stir out there, right? Grassroots action, yeah?
Certainly. And one of the places we need to create a stir, too, is in medical schools because they're only getting a one-sided perspective from the top down. They're becoming technicians, in my opinion, where they're, you know what button on their smartphone to push or what button on the EHR, but they don't know what the dose of amiodipine is for this specific problem. And that comes with time, but not if you're just pressing buttons. You know, it's like the speed dial on your phone. You know, I ask a lot of people, hey, what's your phone number? And they say, I don't know. It's programmed into the phone. So, really? You don't know the phone number of your spouse, your friend, your whatever? No, it's on auto dial. Well, we're doing medicine on auto dial now. So we have to get back to the time when you actually remembered a number and coupled it to something about the person. We have to get back to that, and we have to teach students to do that. And I think Benjamin Rush has a great outreach program. I know AAPSonline.org has a great outreach program, and I'm sure the D4PC Foundation now also has outreach as well. Was there a question, Dr. Chu, to finish up?
Oh, sure. I just, I love just bringing it back to what, Bill from Colorado?
Rip.
Yes, Rip. Sorry. Was saying that this is actually, I love what he brought our attention to with the title that's Let My Doctor, which is one specific doctor to a particular person. And I think that's where our power is, actually. I mean, I was just looking at Twitter, and the media that we get as physicians as an aggregate is whatever, you know, it's about how Dr. Oz accepted over $1 million on a hemorrhoid treatment that he promoted in his column, and then a public list of doctors and the amount of payments that they've accepted from industry. So our, I believe that our strength is not to try to become part of this aggregate doctors' movement, but to own our uniqueness as one particular doctor and to really, really touch. What do you love that you're not doing now? Tell us what you love about being you. Share that with your patients. That's your power. Because joining with whatever generalized group think will, I think, never achieve the real goal of this, which I see as, these are people, all of you, all of you that I've had contact with, I feel you because you are people who love sitting eye to eye, heart to heart, knee to knee with another human being, feeling that you're touching another person. That is power. That's what our world is hungry for, and not a bunch of people railing against the system, because we've got a lot of that. Not that that shouldn't go on, but I think the power of this group and the heart in this group is what you love.
Thank you, Dr. Chu. I believe we have one more question. Just announce yourself and your question, please.
This is more of a comment. I'm a general surgeon in Canyon City, Colorado, but I'm old enough to remember Richard Nixon's concept of the silent majority, which has recently been re-conjured by Donald Trump. But all politics is local, and I would suggest that one of the ways to amplify this message would be with the local medical societies and take the message back locally to your colleagues through the medical society. And also, I would remember the Latin statement, nihil corroborundum illegitum. Don't let the bastards grind you down.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Excellent. One more question.
I think also, the follow, Dr. Strickland, is also going to give us the contact information for several of the different medical groups and news associations to share, to help with the diversification. Do you want to give your name and your question?
Hi, Vicki. Well, I've spoken with most of you about the contact list. It's really an advocacy list that we're going forward. I'd like to reiterate that we need to use social media. We're really behind the times. Many of you don't have Facebook accounts or Twitter, and I might suggest that some of the younger physicians or medical students teach us or have a short course on how to do it so that we can get active. Political campaigns are one on social media.
Ask your teenager. They can explain your cell phone, your remote control, your Twitter account, your Facebook. They may even be able to help when the cable goes out, but don't push it.
Dr. Wax is an expert at Twitter and is on it regularly. But let me just tell you the power of Twitter, and just so you have an idea. And we've scratched the surface, but we have a radio show that we do every week, the Docs for Patient Care Foundation sponsors an internet radio show that Dr. Karuchik and myself co-host on alternate weeks. And we went from 25,000 downloads from June until January, six-month period, and we started to amplify the message on Twitter. And now we average close to 15,000 downloads a month. And that was just from Twitter. And so what we're doing, we're taking it to the next level. And I'm anticipating that the next time we convene, we will be well over 50,000 downloads a month. But that's how you get your message out.
Yeah, absolutely. Totally agree with that. Anybody who tinkers with social media and things, if you just changed one thing and then you see what happens. But there's literally probably dozens of different social media opportunities that you can connect with each other. I mean, it's even changed world governments and started new movements. So it's very, very straightforward. And as I said, if you have children, ask them. If not, ask somebody else's kids, and they'll think you're really cool because you need their help, you know? So in closing, I don't know if you guys want to each sum up with a statement, something that you want to make sure everybody takes home, or something that you're taking home that maybe was added from your experience here. Left to right, right to left, center out?
I'll start. Again, I want to thank you for allowing me to be up here and speak with you. We've been doing what we've been doing for quite some time, the Docs for Patient Care Now Foundation, and we're happy to share everything that we know with anybody who contacts us. And I think that it always, it energizes me to be in a room with people of like minds like all of us, because this is very lonely work. And it's not easy to do this, to swim upstream like a salmon. And you need to have people who you know are doing the same thing and are willing to put themselves out there. So thank you all for being willing to do that.
I would just say that we are advocates for our patients. And there is something that's happening to medicine that we see happening as small practice and solo practice and physician ownership sort of goes away. And that is that the ability of physicians to make sort of the correct moral choices about their patient care is being distracted. And Physicians' Foundation surveys show that that number's about two-thirds, two-thirds of doctors feel that their ability to make good moral decisions are being compromised. So you are the heart of that, you and those that are on the web. So I agree with the comment, don't let them grind you down. We gotta, we have to stay there for our patients. We are one of the final bastions of real moral compassionate care. And take some action points home with you, whether it's you're going to investigate and look at direct care, direct primary care, or you're going to help your patients learn about health shares or health savings accounts or whatever. Take some things, some definite things home, and enact them within the next day or two. Talk to your colleagues, get the word out. But do something and hang in there and survive. Great, thank you. Dr. Hell, you're next with your closing comment.
Again, I thank everyone for being here and the opportunity to participate. I think it's a great blessing, and I just, you know, pray that we can all continue to have compassion and the ability to take care of our patients, which is what we've spent our life doing, and it's our life calling. And it is the utmost importance, and that takes sacrifice. It takes time. It takes reading the laws. It takes not just blindly following what we're told to do. It means looking on the back of the page. And I join with everyone in doing that, and I thank you. And let's bolster up our young, up-and-coming physicians. I think that Benjamin Rush is critical, and we can't give up. Can't get demoralized.
And Dr. Swelling?
Well, I keep saying the same thing, because I've said it now for 15 years. Own it. Let's take back the profession. Let's empower our patients. Let's make this work. And please, communicate with each other. Let's work together. I think there are some common messages we can take from here, and I'd like to hear from you all about one thing you would like to take home from this. And then you can empower me to work to get that done. I pledge to you that when you get to me about something that you think is important, a group action, I will get it done. And I think that everybody should really, do give me something. Don't walk out that door without giving me an opportunity to help and for all of us to work together. I mean, we all came here this weekend. Let's make it work. I refuse to leave here without getting really something accomplished. I'm tired of talking about it. I hate talking to myself. I'm boring. Let's get out there and let's make it work.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Swelling. And thank you to our wonderful panel who spent their time, effort, and resources to be here and answered our questions as honestly as they did. At this time, I'd like to call up the folks behind Let My Doctor Practice and the United Physicians and Surgeons of America, Doctors Thompson, Cravieoto, and Strickland, to speak. And I'd also like to thank them both personally and professionally for all the work that they did and bringing everything together. This was like a wedding to put on. It took a year and lots of hard work, lots of effort, and I just wanted to say personally and professionally, thank you to them. Thank you, Dr. Wax. You've been absolutely tremendous, adding real professional luster to this these past few days. And we can't thank you enough.
It's Mike. We know you guys are all probably tired. We are, and we're ready to get out of here and join the party, so we're going to wrap it up as quick as we can. You guys have really hung in there, and thank you.
Should we do like Craig does?
All right. There you go. Thank you. So I think Dan has a few things to say, then I'm going to wrap up with just a few comments. There is a video we want to play after the live event is over, and we're asking for your feedback on it. We anticipate releasing it later after editing, and we'd like your feedback on that, if you don't mind. I think you'll find it quite unique.
What to say? A lot has been said, and I'm exhausted and I'm tired. I'll just share a few thoughts. I think, first of all, one, appreciate everyone who came here and presented, and I appreciate your thoughtfulness, your intellect, your willingness to share your heart. Appreciate you as a physician colleague, your hard work in medical school, and what you do for our patients, first of all. Second, one of the things I wrote down even before Chris spoke him, I think of Churchill. And he was asked after the war, you know, what great strategy did you have? How did you carry England through its darkest time? And he stood up, and he said, never, ever, ever quit. And then he sat down. That's two. Three, to the younger generation of physicians in the room, there's great hope in you from what you guys spoke and from what I heard. No one knows how this is going to evolve. This is not a two-to-five-year proposition. I look at the medical profession over 50 to 100 years. And I don't know, I kind of do think there has to be one single organization. I'm an ex-small college football player, and I'm big on team. And I think you have to sacrifice the individual for the greater good. That doesn't mean we always agree. But I think with due respect to Dr. Haines, that my own personal feeling is there has to be one organization, or we die. It just goes away. The forces we fight against, the hospitals, the pharmaceuticals, they're too great. While we won't have the money, if you do have one voice in one organization, what you do have is the ability to tell the American public we are united as one. That's what you do have. I think that's a more powerful way to communicate that rather than a bunch of organizations coalescing together. But I might be wrong. And I think, like everyone else said, you know, what we do is special and unique, and we have to inform, inform, inform our patients. When I see a patient, I try to do that in the exam room, our communities, at medical staff meetings, on the state level and on the national level. You guys are already doing that. I'm kind of preaching to the choir here. So that's it. That's, go ahead.
I call on all medical organizations to consider offering to all physicians during the month of August a full-year's membership at half-price or other outreach to increase membership. And to those physicians who accept this offer, if any, for them to be actively involved. I will myself accept this agreement to join together as equal colleagues with one or more medical organizations if so offered. My personal favorite doctors' organization is the Physicians' Foundation. And I want to extend the deepest thanks of Let My Doctor Practice organization. And I want to say neither of these organizations, the Physicians' Foundation or this one, are membership organizations, but they do support our profession and need your support in return. And thanks so much to everybody who has stepped up to that piece of the puzzle here today. Our most special thanks to Tim Norbeck, CEO of Physicians' Foundation, without whose incredible support, encouragement, wisdom, and efforts, this event would not have taken place. And to Foundation President Walker Ray and Board Member Rip Hollister, so good to be with us here in Keystone. And to the board itself. I want to just run real quickly through the list of organizations which have participated in this conference, and you can find them on our website. The Physicians' Foundation, Merritt Hawkins, National Board of Physicians and Surgeons, Docs for Patient Care Foundation, Colorado Medical Society, Texas Medical Association, the American Medical Association, Citizens Council for Health Freedom, Independent Physicians for Patient Independence, American College of Private Physicians, Physician Coalition for National Health Policy, Benjamin Rush Institute, ICD-10 Charge, Doc Squad, Physicians Organizing Committee, Association of American Physicians and Surgeons. of American Physicians and Surgeons, Union of American Physicians and Dentists, WikiDoc Foundation, Atlas MD, Surgery Center of Oklahoma, Physicians' Council for Responsible Reform, Independence Institute, American Doctors for Truth, and Choice Care. And then finally, I can't even express the thanks I feel for Andrea Berry, our Program Director of Amber Agency, and her production team. You guys may not know it, but these guys are absolute consummate professionals. I know you can see that. But Andrea was for 10 years the National Events Coordinator for the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, a 400,000-member organization. And I want to thank that organization for leading me to her. And then she has assembled just an unbelievable team, including Pierre Johnson, Technical Director, Barbara Diaz, Speakers Coordinator, Tim Williams, Head of Alchemedia, Webcasting and Audiovisuals. And I apologize, I don't know all of your team name, Tim. Also, some of the interns who have helped Andrea, Mark Bliahu, sorry if I'm mispronouncing, Amy Stevens, my medical assistant, and Katie Strickland, my daughter. Anyway, this team of people back here have done AMA National Conventions, Audiovisuals, Flying Magazine's National Convention, huge big-name celebrities for 30 years. And they are the reason that this is a professional event.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Could you guys stand up? Andrea, Pierre? Okay, let's wrap it up. Everybody that's participated across the country, thanks so much. Tell your friends. This will continue to be available on the web. And we hope for a good while to come. And we can wrap up the live event. And then again, I'd like to say, just show you a short video if you guys can stay. Thanks, America.
Good job, Mike.